Are you ready to begin? All right. If everybody can, we'll start with the point of allegiance.
Our allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and history, republic, which assumes one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, they will call upon the storm of school really is starting here in a few minutes. For sure. As we go through our agenda tonight, remember as always, our mission and vision to make decisions. So please remember that as we go through all this. So we have just put a form in mind, and we really motion then to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thanks, Tom.
I'll second that.
Say eight seconds. Thank you. Any discussion or no changes at all, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. See no bearing of delegations. And you should have received the consent items, which is next on our list, Thursday at eight or so, or Friday morning. And hopefully you got a chance to live them over, and that is minutes of last meeting, and the retreat invoices, and financial reports.
All final statements are routine for the month. This is in the process of completing CAR for both Algonah and Laverne. So a little bit more to that process this year, but we'll have that done in a month or so.
Yeah, it's right about its height.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions or see anything to do with the new consent reports?
Motion to approve the consent.
Okay, so here we have a second.
I'll second now.
Planning we have a motion and second, and further discussion. Hearing them, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're moving right along tonight. So far, we're at that communications to the board.
Yep, a tour architect is here tonight, and you know, we've been working in the fieldhouse project for some time. Last month, we passed the resolution to use the sales tax towards that project. If we go back, reverse probably about six months, when we really dove deep into our facilities, and talked about some objectives that we wanted to accomplish. Objectives of having more court space for our kids, where we have over $70 volleyball girls who try to practice in one gym in the fall, where we have eight basketball teams that compete in practice in two full-size gyms throughout the entire winter. We also want to, we had an objective of creating more wrestling space, as the addition of middle school girls and high school girls wrestling has created certainly some issues with that. We spent all of last winter with one of our practice spaces being a stage in the Performance Arts Center. Third objective, our weight room isn't capable of housing full team to work out, and we need bigger space for that. And the fourth one is objective of creating track opportunities for our kids. So with those objectives in mind, Reed and Austin from Atur, I've been here, they met with our coaches, they met with our head basketball coaches, our head wrestling coaches, our head track coaches, Mr. Jakson, myself, and we've started to put together concepts, and the concepts have come together into some things that are really, that we can wrap our eyes around literally tonight. So they have some of those things here, and they're going to talk us through some of the process.
Yeah, Joe, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the True North study?
Yep.
If you could do that, I'll hand out physical copies here, but we'll just kind of walk through that very quickly, as well as, and then we'll jump into that video.
Thank you.
Yeah, so as Joe mentioned, my name's Austin Peale, I'm the Business Development Manager for Atur Architecture. And with me is Reed Westman, he's the project architect on this. We've been involved in past projects here at the school with the gateway and softball field. And kind of our goal tonight is to kind of fill you in a little bit on the True North study that we've conducted. We've done one of these in the past, we have not presented on it, it's just been more of a tool used for some master planning. But one of the things that we use this True North study for is really situations like this, where there's maybe a multi-phased approach to some different challenges, or some different goals that the district has. Two years ago, almost to the date, we had completed this study, and prior to that, we had completed the gateway, the new entrance, the football, softball, and baseball fields, the relocation of the softball field. This is kind of the next step. And so how we do that, we really want to focus on what your needs and what your goals are. And Joe did a good job of outlining that, and that's on this, the second page, Joe, is really how we outline that, how we, you know, kind of continue to reorient ourselves to what the objectives are. And it also helps to provide some accountability. So the main thing here was providing all those elements that Joe talked about, really expanding on opportunities for the students to have space to continue to grow programs, but also just to house the programs that you have, just, you know, not only for facilities being nice, it's, there's a huge portion of that that goes into just the safety, making sure that practice times are accommodating to family as best as they can be. Other elements, as far as, you know, you're one of the few schools that has tracks shared from all ages on the same track. And obviously, there's a lot of challenges with that, so looking at some opportunities for that, as well as future expansion opportunities too, just with bringing in students, or bringing in tournaments, or opportunities from that standpoint with the community. So that, this kind of leads us to the next part, which, the comprehensive site plan, that's more or less just an overlook of what have you guys done in the last handful of years. And some of this has been directly through district, some of it's been through fundraising, and just a mix of all the above. And so, you know, again, touched on all those elements. So the next stage is kind of that fieldhouse. So when we looked at this plan several years ago, this is just a snapshot of what we looked at. What this didn't account for is some of that expansion in wrestling, some of the needs within the weight room, and as we looked at size and use of those spaces, and then just additional opportunities. Was this meeting an immediate need and filling that void, or was this looking at, you know, the next five to 10 years, or even just how do we operate from a, you know, from a seventh grade on versus just a high school? So I think that next, that next stage was really walking through the progression of that floor plan. So that's kind of what this shows. Ultimately, and Reed will talk about it more, we landed on that bottom plan, which is what you guys may have seen already, and what we'll talk about today. So Joe, if you want to...
You go to that next page there, Joe. So that, what we landed on here, obviously, one of the things with the site is the slope of that whole softball field is about six feet below floor level where your wrestling room is and weight room is. And so it's hard to see on the plan, but that fieldhouse is about the same level as the softball field. So there's going to be some ramps down there, but that new wrestling room and the new weight room, that'll be at the upper level equal to the northern hallway of that high school. So they'll be able to go down that hallway directly into the wrestling room and then the weight room. And that'll ramp down to the southeast. And there's two entrances there in the south, the one that's immediately adjacent to the existing high school. That'll serve to bring in the middle school teachers through that part of the building to get to the middle school. And then the main fieldhouse door will be, you know, to the east of that, adjacent to the fieldhouse. And that, that'll be a lower floor level. It'll actually be, there's that gray area there that runs sort of north and south there, that's kind of a viewing area, purpose being both for circulation, but also to watch, you know, the track, the activities going on there. So that'll be two feet higher than the fieldhouse floor. So it'll be a good opportunity for spectators right there. So the nice thing is, we've got a lot of large open spaces, it's not going to be overly complex building from a number of elements, and so hopefully that keeps that cost of construction down a little bit. But yeah, if we want to go, if we want to show the video.
Yeah, and some of the, the only other thing I would note about the site is, you know, right now, obviously, there's not a whole lot of parking on that southeast corner. And so this is going to expand your parking by eighty-eight spots. That's beneficial, obviously, for the fieldhouse and any sort of events that go on there. But really what that's going to do for your site with the football games and softball and baseball, and all the other events that are going on back there, it's really going to open up the circulation and the visibility in that area, and it's not necessarily going to be your backside of the school anymore. It's really fully encompassing the whole campus. So I think there's going to be some value add there, just from flexibility and circulation standpoint. And that was, obviously, there's not a whole lot of space that you guys have to be able to put facility like this, but I think it lends itself well to where all the other activities are going on, and kind of centralizing athletics in that area. So if you want to, the rest are just rendering, so if you want to pull up the YouTube, Joe, we'll just let you, we utilized this, we did the gateway, it seemed to be well received and a good education piece, so we'll do this about three minutes long, we'll just let it play. So yeah, there's a lot to take in and digest there. I think one thing to note, maybe aesthetically, one of the goals was kind of tie your athletics together. So you guys have done a very good job over the years. Just from a site lighting standpoint, within that area, both with the gateway and the Performance Arts Center, and I think one of those, why we showed the night shots, is there's definitely a focus on that. But also, from a color and a material standpoint, we're big proponents of kind of tying in your athletics to one another, and I think that lends itself well with the gateway and some of the materials used there. And I think there's some efficiency in cost as well, as trying to continue to utilize some of those items.
Yeah. So materialize, what we're looking at, you know, most of it is all going to be a pre-engineered steel building, very cost efficient there, and so just having a couple of different metal panels there. We'll probably have a translucent wall panel, which will bring in a lot of natural light evenly throughout that whole fieldhouse area. We took the opportunity in that weight room to add a little bit more glass, to create some nice connection between the inside and the outside, and become kind of a focal point, to be able to see that from the parking lot, but also from the fieldhouse side. So, you know, to kind of create some momentum for that space as well. But beyond that, there's some things we did to dress up the south side, that faces the stadium, parking lot. But beyond that, it's mostly just, you know, your pre-engineered metal building, single slope, so as about as efficient as we can get.
Yeah, from a scale standpoint, it's hard to understand when you're looking at a video like that. So if you've been in Humboldt, it'd be a little larger than Humboldt, it'd be more in line from the fieldhouse area to Clear Lake along the center. So same size track, same size middle area, just utilizing more court space than turf area. So, yeah. Happy to answer any questions, or if you'd like to look at stills, or whatever would be beneficial for you guys?
What do we ask for questions? Any change?
This kind of stuff outside the project itself, but it made me think of it when it popped up there, in terms of traffic and bus and drop off and that kind of thing. Does that do anything for us on that side of the building with the drop off traffic?
I think probably the direct impact it has is parking is really, really tight for our staff in our north and south lots, and we add eighty-eight spots. I think that's a number something close to that. So it certainly alleviates some parking. Part of the design, I think Reed mentioned this, is that there's kind of a second entrance with this, right here, that this hallway goes straight through, so middle school staff could park back here and walk through there. That was intentional, as many of them do park back there now, and there's a sidewalk on the outside, so it really, so we don't lose that access, but we gain parking spaces for that. The flow of our buses and that, I don't think it changes that at all, because the parking during the day would be stat parking back there.
And from a campus standpoint, too, one of the things we didn't plan for, and there wasn't a whole lot of discussion, other than just making sure this is future proof of being able to have enough space on the property, that if you ever did want to connect the drive around the west side of the building and come back through to the north, there is space for that. But that's yet to be determined, if, you know, that's ever even a need. Obviously, you have playgrounds over there, and you want to have, you know, safety concerns with the kids.
So we're getting training, repurposing some of the current spaces into a training room? Middle school wrestling is going to maintain that?
The training room is new construction.
Okay.
The existing high school wrestling room would be repurposed into middle school library, and it's connected, it's connected as it is with a door on the north side to the middle school, so it's a good connection there. The current middle school wrestling room would become a classroom slash team room, so we would have a space for health class, or leadership class, or some of our other classes that we have at the high school that don't have a home, that move around and try to find spots. And the third space, which is our current weight room, would be repurposed into a wrestling room, because this wrestling room certainly is much larger than what we have, but we still would need that second room to accommodate middle school girls, high school girls, middle school boys, high school boys, and be able to put the groups with who they should be.
Yeah, and the only other thing to note to that is, some of those are certainly the least, or most underdeveloped areas to this point, and some of that is just based on, you know, where does the budget land and everything else? And those areas, you can certainly take really far, or not, as far as how much you design and develop them. So, but those are the identified areas for all of those activities.
What's the training room?
Ice.
Yeah, ice, tables to tape ankles. We don't have really a spot for that. We have a place with some tables. I think we also have some exercise bikes in there, and our ice machine's kind of back into that room, so we don't really have a place for all of that to be in one.
Yeah, and sometimes, a lot of school districts, they do have partnerships with other, you know, third-party companies. There's requirements that go along with that, and this is one of those steps of if that ever did happen, it helps to facilitate a secure location. There's a lot of, you know, other reasons to have training rooms be a little more open, a little more accessible, just from a safety standpoint with, you know, kids and that sort of thing. So having a little more visible, but still have privacy, but then it be its own separate area helps for, you know, just easier to put them back as well.
Design looks incredible.
It looks really good. Can I ask you one question longer? This corridor here between the little gyms and the high school wrestling, I'm just trying to figure out, this, like a bit of a dead end corridor situation. If something happens here, there's all access.
Yep, so it's all open, so at the very end of that gray corridor area there, on the north side, there's a ramp down that goes into the fieldhouse. And so from a track standpoint, that you egress through the north end of the fieldhouse, if that makes sense.
All right.
And he's talking about that north section.
You can go through one room, did you notice?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Especially in that situation where it's all essentially one room anyway, because it's all open.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
So there, you know, this, I think, two feet about is what the elevation is on this gray area, so there's a ramp that goes down there, there's steps that go down here from that elevated area, which could double as a, like a viewing deck. You see in the video, they had some, like, portable three-row bleacher type that we could set out there, if the track was in use, if it was basketball or volleyball or something like that, you could, then you could use the track for those areas and even double up your space.
Yeah, it certainly provides a lot of good circulation for any sort of events that you inevitably would have to help. You know, a lot of times, they start out as, this is just going to be practice, but you realize the amenity that it can be. And if you've ever been to any of these other facilities, one of the things that's really challenging is you get all those bodies in there, and families along with them, and the circulation there can be dangerous at times. So it provides a very good natural barrier, just even that couple of steps and that ramp, to be able to kind of silo, you know, family and non-competitors here, and competitors on the track area.
We would have the ability to close this off to the high school. There's doors right here, so maybe we're having a youth basketball tournament, we're only using the fieldhouse. We could use that parking, we could use this entrance, these doors could be closed, and everyone would be centered to right there, still with restroom access. So that's something that they designed really, really well there.
Yeah, not that you would allow student parking down there, but being that if that ever did become overflow or student parking, you have a natural barrier to make sure that they don't go through the fieldhouse to go into school. So that second entry is really vital, and just, you know, maintaining any sort of damage or unnecessary court traffic in that area as well.
Actually, we could control flow all the way to here, right? There's doors, there's doors right there, so you could have access to wrestling room, weight room, and the fieldhouse, and still close access to the high school.
Right, summer maintenance and things like that.
It works well with the classroom space that's there right now. They don't have any windows, you know, there's not really a need, so it works well as being a hallway, and there's not, we're not losing out on any natural light or any of those other...
Yeah, for these places here.
Very nice.
Yeah, very nice, thank you.
Any other questions on designs, or our timeline, the guys, kind of that we've been working on, we've stayed tight?
Yeah, we're still geared up for working through construction documents, so that we can bid this in November timeframe, get the bids back, so that we get a contractor lined up well in advance of spring, construction starts.
Is supply chain an issue these days?
Well, with some things it is, and we're looking into that from, particularly with electrical equipment has been an issue, and so we're looking into that right now, yeah.
We've been in contact with AMU, there is some concern on...
Switchgear, yeah.
What's the...
The switchgear.
Yeah, right.
Transformers.
Transformers, some of those things. So these guys are working with them, to make sure we're ahead of the game, if we can be.
Yeah, and they're very helpful with that, too, making sure that they're on top of it as well, looking into what needs to be ordered, so.
Joe, is there some interest with the city, possibly?
Yep, the city does have a collaborative interest in this, some upfront dollars where their rec programs, such as fifth-grade basketball, fifth-grade basketball practice, instead of being in Michelle Wallace's lunchroom, could be on one of these courts from four to five o'clock. That's a really, it's a great use of the space, because the fifth graders are here, right? So they would come down to the fieldhouse, they would have their rec basketball practice, and then be able to get picked up at that drop-off area. They've also talked about, you know, their volleyball leagues, some of those things, even pickleball leagues, that could all be housed in here. And I think that's a great opportunity for us to collaborate on this project with the city moving forward. You see in the videos, the dividers for the court, you know, so you could have a seventh grade basketball team practicing on one court, and an eighth grade basketball team practicing on another court, and you could even have separation to, you know, that rec team on a third court. And you see, we fill these courts very, very fast, because we still have another seventh grade team, and another eighth grade team, and another ninth grade team, and a varsity team, and another varsity team. So we really think, this is a lot of courts, and we still think we would have an early and late practice. So it, we have needs that are very, very pressing, for sure, for court space.
All right, any other questions? Well, thank you both for any advice.
Thank you very much.
Great one doing, thank you. All right, let's move on to administrative report. I believe we have Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Morgan, you're going to talk about summer school, high school, summer school.
I don't have any flashy Youtubes or anything for this business, but thank you for having me. I'm Noel Lauboff, I'm the high school counselor. Wanted to report tonight, just an update on how our summer school program went this past couple of months. Brian Morgan, who's with here with me tonight, and myself, decided to take on our summer school program. The structure of that started with communication, and Brian's role and my role, we kind of collaboratively decided that let's reach out to the kids that needed to continue earning credits through the summer, or continue the work that they were already doing. So he wrote letters to those parents. I put together a list of students who were currently utilizing like our credit recovery program, or maybe had fallen behind on some work in that spring semester, maybe needed to finish something, wrap something up to earn that credit, or had failed something through the school year. So we put together a list of kids, also included in that were some of our students that are part of our alternative school. And so we reached out to a wide range of students. Our goal was to get the students here on campus, and so we set it up, Mondays through Thursdays, from nine o'clock to 11 o'clock. We went four weeks in the month of June. We took some time off in July, the whole month, and then we came back for two weeks in August. And kind of how we set that up, we kind of tag teamed it, we were both here at times, but if I had... up, we kind of tag teamed it, we were both here at times, but if I had a commitment, or Brian had a commitment, we had the other person there, so that kind of worked well in both of our schedules. On a day-to-day basis, what it looked like, we housed ourselves in the library, we utilized Jed and Tyler to make sure we had Chromebooks, so the kids could just come in, log in, and then depending on what they were working on, they either were on their edgenuity program that we use for our credit recovery, or some of them just had to finish a test if they were gone the last week or so of the semester, or they had an assignment they needed to redo, so we, we kind of collected all of that information and were present for them. Ten different students attended, and another part of our practice was to reach out ahead of time, during, and after each day, so if a student wasn't there by nine o'clock, we would call their parents, we would text their parents, we would also get the student involved as well, that helped a lot, and then at the end of the day, we would always update how things went, so our communication was probably our number one thing that, that led to some success, and so, I wanted to share a little bit about how things turned out, and, and going back first, 2020, we didn't have summer school because of the situation we were in, 2021, we did not earn a credit that summer in, in our building, there were credits that came in outside of the building, and students continued to work, 2022, we did not earn a correct credit either, so the last three years, we haven't earned a credit, which kind of led us to where, hey, we need to get some teeth in this, this is, this is a very valuable time that we can have kids catch back up. This summer, to date, we earned another one yesterday, but we're at seventeen total credits earned, six of those were students that needed to finish a spring class, three were from our credit recovery program that they just wanted to keep working, get it finished, because they were already into it, three students have continued to kind of work at home as part of an alternative program, but the communication through email or stuff has continued with them, one student was in part of our alternative school and wanted to finish that credit, and so we burned a geyser power, we continued that communication, and my favorite one, we graduated, three kids that did not graduate this spring, but we turned around and graduated them through this program, and with one more that I, I'm planning on graduating by the, you know, soon, and then I graduated, Mr. Morgan and I worked with a student from 2021 and graduated him as well, ten different students attended, and I think we're going to have another five credits by the end of next week to go with that seventeen, so, very happy, and I, all goes back to communication, and Mr. Morgan did a great job, so, we're pretty proud of how it went this summer, excellent. Any questions?
Fabulous results, you know, we went no credits for three years to seventeen credits to three, four, we hope graduate, just unbelievable results, we, we talk a lot about chronic absenteeism, Mr. Morgan and I, Mr. Cecil, it's a, it's a plague, not only, not just in Algonquin, everywhere in the state, in 2018, there was ten, ten percent of the students in Iowa were chronically absent, 2022, it was over twenty-one percent, it grew fifty thousand students in four years, and we know there was a 2020 in there, that was a really big deal, and these, these guys are attacking it, because ultimately, what summer school is, it's kids who struggle with their attendance, and as a result, they're, they fall behind in their credits, and, and it's, it's really hard work, but it's work that, if we communicate effectively, and that's what they've done, we can, we can make movement, we can get kids to be successful, it's an unbelievable job that these guys have done, so, big, big congratulations to them.
And I want to add, too, the seventeen credits that are complete, we can add on another, I mean, I don't have the data, but the work that kids have done that have got them closer to a credit, so they're ready, and we keep talking to parents and to the kids about building momentum, that was part of our, our plan, coming back in August, they weren't always in the building, or maybe they were late, but building momentum so that their, their habits are, are improving, and, and looking at their progress made in their classes shows that their habits are improving, and the seventeen credits earned shows that as well.
Great job, guys.
Good work, thank you for caring.
Thank you. All right, Jim, we'll go through your superintendent report.
A couple of things, just again, our staffing report, we still have a few positions in the district, middle school, high school, looking for a few teacher associates, they have been effective to hire a few, also Taher has been able to hire some food service staff, which puts, puts us much closer to fully staff in, in that department than what we've been, last year at this time, I reported, I think, we had twelve to sixteen positions still open, we just have a few, so, staffing is in a much better position than it was last year or the year before that. Board retreat, I want to thank all of you for a great retreat last Wednesday, awesome discussions on a number of topics, including the, the facility planning, and specifically the fieldhouse project that we've got to see, and see more of tonight, which I think is really helpful for that, we talked a lot about that project, it's a project that is not funded through property taxes, it's funded through sales tax dollars, so it doesn't impact any of our, our people's property taxes, and that's important to us, we talked about the need for an early retirement program, as we, we forecast out, and we, we look at our finances way down the road, we, we know there's a need in place, so being intentional on, on when that program's, is available to our, our, our people, Mrs. Aishen talked about the instructional framework, and some of those points of emphasis that we're going to use with our teachers, to, to continue to develop more consistency across the entire district and, and how we work with kids, and, and we talked about the future school schedules, such as a four-day student week, for example, and both the positives and negatives of that, and we want to continue to explore those ideas and involve our community in those discussions, so, really good board retreat, the conversation was great, and we appreciate administratively the help of our, our, our board in guiding us in the direction for those topics. Start of school, we had new teachers in today, which was exciting, they'll be in today and both tomorrow, we did bring them in, in June as well, and that really allows us for them to get here today and really just, you know, start, start right at it, we don't have to spend time on computers and keys and passwords and stuff like that, we can just start on the work we need from them to, to get ready for the kids on August twenty-third and twenty-four. All staff will be in Wednesday, we'll start with all two hundred and fifty staff members out here in the commons, our food service management company's going to have breakfast for us, which will be, will be awesome, I'll, I'll give kind of the opening message before we, we disperse from there for department meetings and building level agenda, we'll have a similar schedule on seventeen, and then August eighteenth is a, is a non-contract day for teachers, and all of our buildings and offices will be closed. We'll come back on Monday, August twenty-first, and author Jimmy Casas will be here to kick off our school year, and we're really excited about that, at eight-thirty in the Performing Arts Summit, you're certainly welcome to, to attend and, and listen to Jimmy, who will certainly inspire us and about being champions for kids and, and developing that culture that's good for, for all of our students. Grades five through twelve will start on August twenty-third with K through four on the twenty-fourth. Odd year, board election year, so we'll include all of those key dates for our school board elections, and you'll see those on your sheet as well as on the screen, Lisa does have all the papers or anything that she would need for reelection, which we hope, we certainly have some who are interested in that.
All right, any other questions for Joe?
Going back to the presentation right before, I hope we're planning on doing this now, summer schools next year or two for high school?
Yeah, absolutely, you know, I think your guys' commitment to a couple of things, our, our alternative program, summer school this year, we probably have seven graduates between the alternative program and summer school, six, six, that without the commitment of the district, the commitment of the board, going back to last August, wouldn't happen, those, those students would not have graduated, so those, those, that's, that's moving the needle, that's making a difference for kids, and those are things we want to, we want to continue to do.
Agreed. All right, we'll move into the, the new business part of the agenda tonight, looks like we're starting by looking to approve quite a few fundraisers.
Yeah, those are all in your, your packets, our board policy requires that all fundraise, fundraising involving students and/or staff be approved by myself or designated, which could be the activities director or building principal, if the fundraising activity will generate more than twenty-five hundred dollars, then it needs prior for approval, so we, we try to gather all of those requests up to bring those to you at one point, some of the fundraising activities in your packet, the estimates are not for twenty-five hundred, but we, we just think it's important to approve them, because they could be, and, and just be transparent in that process, the dance team has one in there, estimated net proceeds of fifteen hundred, high school football cards, estimated net proceeds eight thousand, FFA has a number of them, including the pancake feed and labor auction, the plant sale, and the fruit and meat cheese sale, middle school, chocolate bars, estimated proceeds five thousand, high school wrestling cheer, punch cards, high school girls wrestling, pin-a-thon, Bertha Godfrey, elementary cookie dough, and Bryant Elementary Cherry, Cherry Dale project, so these, these are almost all fundraisers that we've done in the past, there's a couple of new ones in, in wrestling to, to generate some, some dollars for things such as hotel rooms at state wrestling, so they can take all of their people to those, to those events.
What's a pin-a-thon?
So someone could come to you and say, how, what would you be willing to donate per pin, so maybe you're going to give five dollars for every pin that that child has, and they get twenty pins?
Very cool.
You'd give a hundred dollars.
Can we do these elops, elop together?
We can, yeah, we can do all of these as one, a new business for the C.
So, so isn't any other questions, I guess that's what we need, we need a motion to approve the fundraisers.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thanks, Andy, you have a second.
I have a second, though.
Thanks, Jay, I would say the football one, I don't know, I think I might have twelve sets the day the card came out.
Give them out for Christmas.
Yeah, that's great, they all went to work on them, so, we do have a motion in a second, all in favor, is there a?
Aye.
Opposed? Fundraising request approved, looking at demolition proposal for, I believe, the Laverne.
So I've been in contact with the mayor of Laverne, Mr. McPee, and we have sat down together and talked about the future of the Laverne School Building, you know, I've emphasized that, and we want to do what the community of the Laverne wants, if they want the building, we'll work with them on that, if they want the building to come down, that's what this is, this is a proposal to hire FEH, to facilitate that process for us, this is not a vote to remove the building, it was, it's just a vote for FEH to be our facilitator, if that's what we want to do, I'm scheduled to speak with the city council at a special meeting in September, and then I, I think we'll get exact direction of where we're going to go with the Laverne building, the Laverne district did a nice job of setting aside funds, so we have funds available to take the building down, if that's how the community wants to proceed.
It's been good to see the community's been real proactive in, in this whole process.
Yep, I think so, and, and conversations, and again, we're, we're open to where they want to go with this, this is just a proposal to use FEH to facilitate that process, if that's what they want to do, so I, I would recommend the approval of the FEH proposal.
All right, just need a motion then for that approval.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Thank you, I need you have a second. Second, a motion, all right, okay, stop, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any other all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we do have a lot of handbooks, we'll discuss here briefly, but we will be approving them all together.
We, we typically approve handbooks over the summer, with the legislative changes, there were a number of pieces that we were waiting for guidance on the Department of Education on, we have not received all of those, but we have received enough to proceed with our handbooks, we've included all of our handbooks for approval, all of these handbooks have changed to include the updated bullying and harassment policy, which was a required rewrite from a legislative change, they also all include the student identity board policy, which is a required policy, also that came from the legislative change, that, that policy says if a child wants to be referred to as a name or pronoun different than their gender at birth, we have to notify the parents that they've asked that, and we have to give parent permission to do that, that, that's what that policy, five oh three, says. The administrative team also has worked hard to rework the district cell phone policy over the past six months, we've used surveys from staff in that policy, and that updated policy is also included in all of these handbooks, the purpose of that policy is that cell phones and other like devices distract from the learning environment, in order to provide a more positive and engaging, engaging learning experience for students and staff, the following policy has been created, cell phones and other like devices are not allowed to be out in classrooms in the Algonquin Community School District, the only exception to this policy shall be for an academic purpose directed by a staff member, first offense, the cell phone goes to the office until returned by administration, second offense, the cell phone goes to the office and the parents pick up the cell phone, so this is something I know we have discussed for some time as a board, and this will be a policy that, most importantly, is good for kids, it, those devices have negatively impacted our learning environment, and negatively impacted our kids, and this will create a better environment, so all of the handbooks also reflect that, that policy, like I mentioned, we are anticipating guidance yet from the, our Department of Education on a discipline policy, we don't have that yet, so, these handbooks will come back to you with an addendum later on in September or October, and we'll have to have our parents once again acknowledge receipt of those, which is a legislative requirement as well, so, those, those will be coming, a couple other things, Lisa Chapman has developed a, a business procedure handbook, we'll, we'll be approving that again, which just cleanly outlines processes in the business offices, such as purchasing and then payment requests, so I do recommend the approval of these handbooks as, as presented.
The cell phone policy is going to be a, a great help in us, limiting distractions for our students moving forward, and I just ask, I really think we need to strive at being consistent in all buildings, being unified, the last thing we want is, here is, it's not taken seriously, here it is, just for our students' sake that we're all on board.
Yeah, like with all policies, they lack consistency, they'll, they'll lack, you know, making a difference, so I agree with you, Jay, and I, I think you, you reiterate something we heard a lot, parents see this as an issue as well, and I think we have support from our parents for, for this type of policy.
How will the students become aware, I mean, I mean, since we've talked already?
Yeah, opening day, I'm sure there'll be high school, high school sessions with the kids, middle school will do the same, I think Mrs. Chucher and Mr. Soudal plan to just handle those things at the elementary at that level.
Yeah, okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Thanks, Andy.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jay. Over. Jay, any further discussion with the handbooks?
All right.
Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Handbooks are approved, we've got a board policy change, just first reading.
First reading, so, Lisa has developed a schedule of board policy review that will allow us to be consistent in that process, there, what we've been doing is entire series, first reading one month, second reading in the next, prior to that, I think we may, may have done all policies at once, but either way, we haven't been consistent in that practice, this series, or this schedule will allow us to, to really spend time and, and look through these things, and, and make sure we're, we're understanding, number one, what our policy says, and, two, any changes that need to be made, so, this is just a first reading for just part of the four hundred series, four oh one to four oh five-ish, there are some changes in four oh four, R1, code of professional conduct, we're going to add a couple of standards to that, one, one of the standards is incompetence, and the other is compliance with state law governing obligations, child support obligations. obligations, child support obligations and board orders. So that would be in addition to four oh four R one. Four oh five two, we need to update the website to address school openings posting, it used to be on Iowa School Spring, now it's on Iowa Works. And then the last two, and we have meal allowance in our policy, but it doesn't have amounts, correct? So this adds the amounts to that, so approved expenses for our people who are traveling for work for us to be reimbursed at fifty dollars per day and without one meal being over twenty-five dollars. And the last, that's the meal reimbursement, the last here is travel reimbursement will be at the federal rate, which is what our county does and is fairly typical. Our rate was much lower than that, so it will be at the federal rate, and we will review that every July. First reading's there, no action needed.
Any questions on that first reading? All right, we'll move on to where we were looking at the second reading.
Second reading, we went through all of these last month, there are a lot of them. These are all of the board policy changes as a result of legislative changes in last session. Updated anti-bullying and anti-harassment policy, that's a complete rewrite to match the Iowa Association of School Boards recommendation. In that rewrite, it also includes the investigation procedures and filing a complaint and how that process will work. The second major change is with public participation in board meetings. Again, this is a rewrite to match our current practice. We've always allowed public comment during board meetings. This also creates board policy that says a petition can be signed to place a topic on the agenda. We have a lot of people to place topics on the agenda already, but it now becomes board policy if they can use a petition in that process. Required professional development for employees, there are much, there's a number of required trainings that all staff members have that they didn't before, such as all of our people who come in contact with kids have to do the mandatory work for children, for example, as well as bloodborne passage and a number of others. So we've sent that information out, we're providing more in-service time to complete all those than we've had in the past. Also, part of that is for all of those required trainings, we have to give the Iowa code that requires them to do that. So this is what we're asking you to do, this is the law that says why we have to do that. So I created a document that has all that stuff in there, and we've already provided that to our people. The last major change is five oh three oh seven, this is a new policy, and this is a required policy to student disclosure of identity. And I summarized this before, that if a child came to one of our staff members and asked to be called a name different than their birth name, or a pronoun, or gender different than their birth gender, we would have to inform their parents of that, and then they would have to also sign off allowing that. If they didn't allow that, then we would not be able to. This is the form that we would report the student disclosure.
All of these board policies, we can find on our website, correct, like titles?
Yep, under district, school board, policies, which is where all these are located, including these forms and this information.
Probably not tomorrow.
Give me a minute. Five oh three seven, the disclosure of identity, that's statewide, that's a?
That is, that's a required new policy statewide, yes. It's a good question.
I know we want to take a better look at these because there was a lot last month, so any other questions or discussions?
Thank you for allowing us to do that, and love you, Rose. Appreciate that.
So, all right, with that said, we need a motion then to approve the board policy.
So moved.
All right, we have a second.
I'll second, Matt.
Thanks, Andy, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Policy's approved. All right, as I lost my, here, we're going to approve some Iowa Lakes contracts.
Yep, we need to approve our contract with Iowa Lakes Community College for Auto Tech, Broadcast Tech, and Nurse Aid. Auto Tech, the operating costs of this program are shared by us and as well as Iowa Lakes. The total program cost for us is estimated at thirty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars for fiscal year twenty-four. Operating costs of the program for Broadcast Tech are one hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-six. The college will teach nurse aid for a compensation of eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight for the school year.
On the Auto Tech side, Joe, is this kind of all encompassing of our auto program? Do we have, because I know obviously we have a lot of students that want to take it. Is that part of this, or is that beyond that?
Yeah, we do have a lot of students who want to take it, and we, because of the nature of actually both Auto Tech and Broadcast, you know, there's caps to it, how many we can allow into those programs, and I think there's probably times we can't get everyone into Auto Tech because of the, which is great, that's great that we have that many kids interested, not great that some kids aren't allowed to. That is our portion of the program, or is that total?
We also pay him.
Yeah, there's this, and then we also pay him in addition to that, because the program was meant to be a half as big as it is, so we pay for the other half, is how that works.
So it's about twenty-seven thousand more to pay?
Yeah. Does that answer your question?
So it was smaller, we've expanded it?
We have expanded it, from half a day to full day. So it's as large as we can have it with one instructor.
Instructor.
Yeah.
And on the broadcasting tech, maybe it says in here, but is that like, is that a half day?
That's a full day program as well, under different components to it. Again, because of the nature of the hands-on, you know, we can't have twenty kids in one of those classes, you know, that would be too many, so those numbers are smaller than that as well, so that they can get everything out of that program.
That program, do we see, I mean, are we hitting the top numbers there too, or?
I don't think we're hitting the top numbers in broadcasting. We certainly have kids who are involved in it, they do a lot of different things throughout the district and even the community, but there's room to have more kids in there.
And then how about the nursing side, how it will?
I think some semesters we have a handful of kids, and sometimes we don't. Last year, I think we had a semester where we didn't have a student take that.
Two sections. It's really hot this year.
It's really hot this year, so, yeah, yeah.
Good.
So those are good questions about those programs.
Any other questions?
Great programs for our kids.
Absolutely.
They come at an expense, this is that expense to have those programs.
I think we need to continue to look at support, like the vocational and tech side of things, yeah.
Yep. All right, then, we need a motion to approve that Lake contract.
Motion to approve the Iowa Lakes CC contracts?
Thank you, Tom, do you have a second?
Just a second.
All right, Jay, thank you. There are motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're looking to approve the nursing agreement with KRHC.
Yes, Super Regional Health Clinic provides our nursing services for the Algonia Community Schools. This agreement allows for employees of KRHC to be physically present on the premises of the school or immediately with mobile contact for seven hours every day. So seven hours a day, some additional time for other school functions totals fifteen hundred hours in a school year. This is the same agreement we've had time-wise and expectation-wise as we've had in the past. It went up from ninety-six thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars to ninety-seven thousand one hundred and sixteen, so it went up one percent from last year. It had not gone up the previous three years. So this is the first increase in this program since two thousand and twenty. So I would recommend the approval of the KRHC nursing agreement contract for that amount of ninety-seven thousand one hundred and sixteen.
All right, any discussion? It is something we've pretty much done every year, I don't know how long we've been doing it now, but quite a few.
Yeah, I don't know the history of it, it was in place when I arrived, and I think it had been for a few years. They work hard for us, they do, and I think that one percent increase is something I would certainly recommend.
Well, the work they did during COVID.
It was very valuable at that time.
And I know my kids have used it, they've always done a nice job, so I agree.
And ask for a motion for approval then.
So moved.
Thanks, Andy, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Andy, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Contracts approved. Open enrollments.
We have eight open enrollment applications for this month, five of these applications are into the district and three are out. I do recommend all eight enrollment applications, all of them, all of the applications meet the requirements, the state requirements for approval.
So moved. We have a second.
Second.
Thanks, Andy, here, motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Open enrollments approved. I'll go into our resignations next.
Six resignations, Melissa Remmer, middle school teacher associate, Krista Kayle, Lucille Wallace, teacher associate, Jeremy Rommel, middle school boys wrestling, Kristy Rasmussen, middle school teacher associate, Fay Schluer, bus driver, and Cassie Davis from food service.
All right, motion for approval.
Motion to approve the resignations?
Thanks, Tom, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Andy, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resignations approved. Last personnel, new contracts on our agenda.
New contracts, we have Mike Dunlap, volunteer assistant football coach, Calvin Brandt, one-year swimming coach contract, Colin Petten, teacher associate at Bertha Godfrey, Laura Cram, teacher associate at Bryant, Michelle Tate, teacher associate at Bertha Godfrey, Alicia Seaward, middle school teacher associate, and Adam Orman for musical director.
All right, any questions? Now, we need a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the contracts.
Thanks, Andy, do you have a second?
I'll second though.
Thanks, Jay, we have a motion and a second to approve these contracts, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Contracts approved. Nice job with all the discussion tonight, it's great to see the concepts, wonderful to hear the great news about the house under school was effective, all that, so need a motion then to adjourn? Unless we want to?
Nobody wants to leave, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, welcome to the.